We are making the announcement, in the course of the Mass General Laws, that we are recording the meeting. Is anybody else recording the meeting?
Nope.
Other comments?
None.
Counsel comments? Anyone? All right. Town manager report.
Let me start the meeting by telling everybody that there are copies of the town's annual report up here, extra ones. I've given them to all the council members. Either you got it when you stop by to pick up stuff out of your packet, or I brought them tonight to those that had not checked their spot. The annual report, I think it looks pretty good, but you all be a judge. It's the year of transition, so you have, in addition to the town council and town managers' report, you have Board of Selectmen report. So it's a year that's recording a lot of change to the town. Marge and I have begun posting excerpts from my report to the council on the town's website, so that it's another way of getting the word out to more of the public. And, you know, they seem to be interested in hearing what we have to say, so we'll keep on going till they tell us to stop. Our building commissioner, Kevin Duquette, has been here for three months already, and I thought it would be a good time to provide you with a little bit of an update on the building department, what they've been doing, what he's been doing. He's conducted 38 building permits and seven enforcement inspections in the last month, along with 27 zoning enforcement complaint inspections, which led to 14 new zoning violation notices, along with the current 20 open violation cases and five resolved zoning violation cases. I received a lot of positive feedback about Kevin, and people seem to be saying that in dealing with him, he's pleasant but firm, and offers suggestions on how to resolve issues rather than just issuing orders that they need to fix it. It's a great way toward the steps that we're trying to take that doing business in East Long Meadow is a positive experience. So I'm delighted to have him on board. To follow is the timeline for the Fourth of July celebrations, and I'll be celebrating on July 5th, because we'll have gotten this all together. And beyond us, we've even got good weather coming, it looks like, for the next five days, six days. So the only day that looks like it might be a little iffy is maybe showers on the parade day. So let's cross our fingers that of all the things, that's not it, because I understand that's pretty spectacular. So you've got the timeline, so you can check that out. We also did flyers. I asked Marge to put a flyer together that we have in the town buildings, so that the general public, because it was so up and down this year, were we having fireworks, were we having the carnival, it's got a, you know, flag and that kind of stuff, and just to let everybody know what's going on. I had a visit from Ray Miller, who's on the Board of Directors of the Brownstone Properties. He wanted to update me on the board's plans, the upcoming plans. They'll be modernizing the laundry rooms and adding laundry rooms to buildings that don't have them, modernizing the fire alarm system, and adding an elevator to the two-story building. They also expect to add another building in the near future. So big plans for them. They're a great, really great proactive group of Board of Directors. My assistant, Marge, and the town accountant are working with Robert Charles Photography on the official First Town Council portrait that you all are interested in. They should have some information on that for you shortly. The library director has been working on a strategic plan for the library, and I've added the website that you can link to and take the survey. I also provided you with a bookmarker that has that information on it. The new director of the library is really doing an awesome job as well. You'll see advertising for quite a few openings in town for positions. Majority are due to either realignment of the personnel for the new form of government, such as the treasurer-collector. Once we did the Director of Finance, we then had that position open. There were a couple positions that were funded last year that never got fully vetted, assistant to the, or the accounts payable, I think, person in the accounting office. Or there are new positions with this year's budget, the upcoming budget, the inspector positions that will be really pretty fully paid for through the new licensing fees in the Health Department. So a lot of those are that, and there's a few that are just turnover positions. There continues to be no motor vehicle accidents on the Maple Street spur to the Rotary, which is a surprise, but I checked this morning. Actually, it was close to lunchtime. And the chief said, certainly, we're not going to keep that streak up, but as long as it's proving to be an effective way of remedying the situation, we're going to continue watching that. There have been other suggestions, and we'll take those into account if this one doesn't work, or we find issues with pieces of it. I've talked to the chief about that, and we're keeping those in abeyance. But for right now, it looks like it's a go. In the fall, we'll just be checking again to see what we do. Before it's time for snowplows to be dealing with barrels, we're going to figure out the next step. Council on Aging's pilot program for the transportation that is East Long Meadow, Hampton and Long Meadow is going to be delayed a teeny bit. I had asked to make sure that the agreement that the three towns were going to be going into was vetted by our town attorney. He had a couple of suggestions that were valid ones. It then went to Long Meadow, and Hampton have the same town attorney, so it went to their town attorney, and he also had some thoughts on it. So I talked to Carolyn today. She said, actually, our questions are being addressed, and it's now Hampton and Long Meadow that's holding it up, because they got on board with the town attorney piece a little late. So it'll be done sooner rather than later, but there's just a teeny bit of a glitch. I've attached excerpts from the pavement management study that Bob Parent just gave to me this week. I thought you would find it interesting, and I saw some of you really poring over the pages. That's why I made sure this pavement condition map was in color. Black and white just wouldn't have been the same, huh?
Mm-hmm.
So you can see...
They're all the great ones.
Yeah. You can, I think I picked the pages that support what that map represents and what we should be doing in the future. So it's good for planning, or it's just good information to plan for as we're going through capital projects in the future, to say, okay, we have a snapshot of the conditions of the road right now. They'll only deteriorate worse, so they'll stay at this, kind of the same levels, pretty much. It's a great tool. I've used it before, and it really does help in making decisions. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Not a question, but I just wanted to add, as you noted, the fireworks are at 9:30, and I just wanted people to note that, because I saw, you know where you get the free newspapers and stuff, the Comfort, the company...
Oh, the flyers, their flyers.
Their flyers is 10 o'clock. So I want everybody to know that the fireworks are actually at 9:30, not 10 o'clock. They have a misprint on there.
That's one of the, well, not because I knew Comfort was going to be wrong, but in the past, it has been 10 o'clock.
Yes, yeah.
That's why I thought I wanted to get the word out there that we were having all the pieces, and that the time was changed for that. So we have been getting some calls. Not a huge amount, though, I'm surprised. So I probably jinxed us for tomorrow.
Can you just state your name, who you're with?
Yes, Dana Slay, Los Angeles.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm just going to make a motion to take, well, actually, we'll do it after, but we could make an entertaining motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2017 open session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I made one correction, which I told Jeannie. The reason I couldn't vote in the Bentley situation was not because I was on the planning board at the time. Actually, you can't represent people and be an elected official. You have to wait for a year. I appeared as an attorney before the planning board for their special permit, and then before the Board of Selectmen for their licensing. That was it, one and done. So it had nothing to do with me being an elected official. It was my capacity as an attorney, and I have not represented them or any member of their group since.
So we'll make that change?
Yeah, I gave her a summary.
I'll change my motion then to reflect approval of the minutes as amended.
Just give it a second.
So moved and seconded in all favor?
Aye.
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 Communication correspondence announcements, we don't have any, right, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Probably hearing his noise. License matter, I don't know, whole business. The school.
Gordon, I think you're up.
Thank you for having us. We're delighted to be back, our second consecutive meeting, with really good news. Not fantastic news, because we didn't get the roof, but we have been invited to, into the process with the Mass School of Building Authority for the accelerated repair program for Meadowbrook to replace the windows and the doors. The reason that the roof was separated out is because this year, they had more applicants than they've had in previous years, and so they went from a threshold of items being 30 years in use, excuse me, items being 20 years in use, to items being 30 years in use. And our windows and doors are over 30 years old, our roof is 24 years old. So the hope is, and we were encouraged unofficially by the person to whom I spoke, to put back in as soon as we can for the roof. So we will all be at the Mass School Building Authority Board Meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00, hoping that the traffic in Boston is lighter.
Yeah.
And we'll find out we don't get lost.
Yeah.
So tomorrow, we'll get a chance to introduce ourselves to the Mass School Building Authority Board of Directors in person, which is pretty exciting.
So we'll change those thresholds from year to year, Gordon?
I guess, yeah. That wasn't something that had been stated previously in any discussion up until I received the phone call on Friday.
Okay, so it's not sounding like you're going to have to wait another six years on the roof?
That's the hope. The gentleman who called me was someone I had not met before, and he was almost apologetic. He said, you know, you were in the discussion all the way through. We had to figure out a way to get, to maximize as many applicants' opportunities as we could, and so we had to move our threshold from 20 years to 30 years.
Does delaying the roof cause any issues?
There's always...
Well, you know what I mean, I mean...
Issues. But we have a great relationship with the Department of Public Works, and so we'll patch and identify where we're having troubles and continue to manage it.
Okay.
For that being said, you need some money.
That's what he said, yes.
Just a little bit.
We, I believe all of you have a copy of the Mass School Building Authority language for the motion?
Yep.
And so I was able to quickly have them take a look at that and run it through their legal department, and so they feel that that's a motion that's acceptable, and if it's acceptable to all of you, it would appropriate, not the amount we talked about last time, because now we've removed the roof from it, but it's $100,000 in order to do the feasibility study and the initial schematic design. And then from all of that information, we should get very specific numbers for the total cost of the project, hopefully somewhere between December and February.
Sarah's going to shoot me because she doesn't have her computer, but do you happen to know the balance of free cash?
Yes, it is, if I can come on my, or if I can... After you approved the $100,000, which I'm assuming will happen, it will be $2,447,035.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the feasibility study and the initial schematic design for the capital project to replace the windows and doors at Meadowbrook Elementary School at 607 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that is otherwise capable of supporting the required educational program? This will include all the incidental costs and related there, too, and for which the town of East Long Meadow may be eligible for a grant from MSBA to set amount to be expanded in the direction of Meadowbrook Elementary School Building Committee. To meet the appropriation, the council will, with the recommendation of town manager, transfer from the town's free cash, set amount of $100,000. Town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a noninterruptionary discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and if the MSBA's Board of Directors wants to invite the town to collaborate with the proposed repair project at a cost to the town of East Long Meadow occurs, the excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be sole responsibility to the town of East Long Meadow.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good work by you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for writing that, too, so I could...
You wrote extremely well.
Yes, you did. We'll keep you updated as we get more information.
Thanks.
Well, tomorrow.
Thank you.
Leave early.
Yeah, we are. Good voice of experience.
Yeah. Thank you, Gordon. Thanks, Marty. On to nice C. Actually, I'm going to take, we should do D first, right, because we have the staff here. Oh, all right, so we can do, we'll go to C1. Are you waiting?
We're going to pull to 6:30.
Oh, okay, so you're hoping on?
We're waiting.
All right, all right. Amy, you're up.
I do have some additional information that came in today to pass out for your review.
You're going to have to walk us through the information you sent out, because we didn't get it till lately this afternoon.
Oh, sure, I can...
So I didn't, I don't know about the others, but I didn't have a chance to read through it.
Yeah, that's no problem. So first, I want to thank you guys for allowing me some time to come and talk to you guys tonight. What I'm here specifically to address is the new mosquito control program, as well as a new tick testing program that the Health Department is rolling out. As you guys are all aware, the town has been spraying BTI from a helicopter for many, many years. Last year was my first year at the Health Department, where I was part of that process, and a lot of questions were raised about the effectiveness of that program. After the program was over, I started to do some research, took some classes on mosquitoes, and I realized that it was important to start diving deeper into this. During some of that, I found out that mosquitoes have four life stages. They have the egg, the larva, the pupa, and the adult. The BTI that we had been spraying was only effective on destroying the larva. So that means each of the other stages were alive and thriving. Additionally, the BTI that was sprayed in the wetlands and larger bodies of water lasts for about two to three days. So we were getting a very small window of time where we were killing the larva with the rest of the summer left. Mosquito lifespan is about 14 days. So that is constantly evolving and growing. So in my conclusion, after all my research, I decided that this, this program that we were using was inefficient, and we were spending $16,000 a year on this. We started a contract with a new company. It's Vector Disease Control International. And what the plan with this is to try to get us some data. We were spraying, or dropping the BTI, but we had no statistical data to say, we had this many larvae before we sprayed and this many, much larva after we sprayed, or we've caught 50 mosquitoes in this area prior to spraying, and now we're only down to 10 mosquitoes. So it was really important to get some data around what type of mosquitoes we have, what viruses they're carrying, and where are they particularly breeding. So some of the money that was allocated for the spraying in this budget was now used to collect the data. This company is setting up two traps through areas that are known to be breeding grounds for the type of mosquitoes that carry West Nile virus. Those traps are set and checked weekly. Those mosquitoes are then sorted. The ones that carry the West Nile virus are sent over to the state lab and tested for the virus. If there were to be a hit of positive virus, we would be notified within the week. Basically, what that allows the Health Department to do is do outreach to the community, assist them in ways to protect themselves, and then targeted intervention with that specific area. In addition to the two traps that we've had them set up, they also did some BTI pellets into our catch basins, which are commonly known breeding grounds for mosquitoes. So we have 90-day treatment pellets have gone into 100 catch basins throughout the community to prevent the continued growth of the mosquitoes. Finally, as part of this, they will be doing 10 larval dips a week. So they'll go to known areas that they've identified through their systems, as well as our GIS systems, the DPW, to assess the larval load throughout the season. So every week, they'll go to 10 different areas and see how the larva is growing. If it's a significantly large portion in one area, then we can target and treat that one area versus treating the whole town one time. So throughout the season, we'll be able to take care of any problems that evolve. So the goals, the goal of the change is a reallocation of the money we were already spending in a more advanced way of doing mosquito control. And so that's the report on what is happening. What I provided to you in the spreadsheet, as well as the information that was just handed out, this is the one that you received in your packet, is the first report that we got from VDCI. It shows two of the areas that were tested. They don't give us specific areas, because the traps are so expensive, that they just kind of give us an area. You can see in one of the traps, they caught 50 mosquitoes that are known to carry West Nile virus. All those came back negative. So that will be an area that they will continue to monitor moving forward. In the two additional paperwork that you got from me today, I apologize they were late. They just got them to me this afternoon. But you'll see there's one labeled on top, Catch Basin Treatments, and that's basically a GIS report of the catch basins that they have treated, and those areas were mutually agreed upon with Roy Esposito and their mapping techniques. The other one you can see is, on the top right, you see it's treated larva present. So that's when they go around to the wetlands, and they check for the larval load in those areas. That's what will help us, that will change every week, and that's what will help us identify targeted areas for treatment. Any questions?
How are the catch basins decided? I notice that the locations of them aren't good. They don't, to my untrained eye, they don't have any rhyme or reason. How are the...
Roy Esposito has a GIS, well, DPW specifically, Roy, has a GIS mapping system. So they were treating the areas where the catch basins have a pump, so areas where the water sits longer in the catch basins, because that helps mosquito breeding. They also tried to focus on areas of at-risk individuals, so senior citizens or children. So there's some around the park system. So that's how they were selected.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now you don't mind all these humans in here, do you?
No. Well, I'd encourage Deanie to come, not just to educate you all, but we want the public to know why they don't have the spraying this year, and not be alarmed by that, because there's a much more scientific-based approach to dealing with the bigger questions instead of just the instant thing that fogging would do. So our health director is very proactive in a lot of things, and this is one that will benefit the whole community over the longer term in a much better way. So kudos, Deanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
The other thing I'd like to update you guys on is a new tick testing program, which I am very excited about.
If you can be excited about ticks.
It is exciting. It's real public health. No, okay, so the Health Department has partnered with UMass. UMass has a service that they offer everybody in the state, where they will test their ticks that I find of themselves, on the dog in their house, in order to assess for any of the tick-borne illnesses that are dangerous to humans or dogs, or cats. This service is usually at the base at $55 per test, with their match system, where it have this test for our residents down to $5 a test. So this allows our residents to more easily access these type of services, and it also allows us the ability to collect data. I love data. I'll talk to you about data. But this base, so we'll know where the ticks are being found, what bacteria or viruses they're carrying, what time of day the person believes this tick got on them. And that way, we can do education to our community about where these are, what time of day they're coming, what to avoid, what to do to help. So it's, I'm really excited with the data, but also the ability for our residents to know sooner what they might have contracted from the tick. Typically, lyme is, something like Lyme disease won't show up in blood work for a couple weeks, which then you've had this whole delay while your body is being affected by the Lyme disease. With this, you'll know within three days that the tick that was attached to you carried any of these bacteria, so you'll get treatment that much sooner. I'm sure everyone knows about Lyme disease and how quick treatment is necessary to prevent the disease from becoming extra problematic. So exciting stuff. Any questions on that?
How are you going to communicate that to the public? Because I wouldn't know if I...
This is hot off the presses.
What's that?
This is hot off the presses. So I'm meeting with Elcat tomorrow. We're going to do a segment on it, and I'll be doing a robocall sometime this week to inform residents of where and how to send the tick. Some of the great pieces of this program is, it doesn't matter what condition the tick is in. So you could have had it in your freezer just to see. You could have had it in alcohol, or in tape, or half a tick, a dead tick. They can test it all.
Wears.
Yeah, half a tick, you can't...
You are excited.
Well, tick-borne diseases cause a lot of problems in a lot of people's lives. So it's, it's exciting.
I was thinking, as he said...
I know you were.
So anybody with any questions about this, or how they can send it, or what might be useful to test, they can reach out to the Health Department, and then I can also get them in touch with the UMass lab directly.
Put it on the Facebook site?
I will. I wanted to present to you guys first.
Well, I mean, now...
Yes, Twitter and Facebook.
Amy, as long as you're here, do you want to tell them about the Elcat series that you do?
Oh, yes.
Because I happened across it, and I thought, she's like a movie star.
Well, Elcat has given us an awesome opportunity, and Rebecca is amazing at her job, where I go get to go in and talk about a current health trend. So I don't know if you've seen it. Last week, we did ticks and prevention of tick-borne diseases. I believe next week, we're doing heat illnesses, so, oh no, swimming safety. Next week will be swim safety. So reminding parents on tips and techniques to help keep their children safe. We also have a segment coming up on the dangers of being in a hot car. A lot of times, people don't realize how fast and how quick the temperature in a car heats up. So it's just little reminders about current issues that are public health-related issues for our community members.
How long are these segments?
They range.
Yeah, they're not very long.
Easy to watch.
Yeah.
Have a lot of information.
Right.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
I think the Hampton Selectmen are...
We'll go back to one.
John, are you all set? Yeah, the Hampton Selectmen are all set.
Thank you much nicer than our place.
No, I find it very comfortable over there. I wish our meeting was there.
It's the personalities that you find comfortable. They'll just get that straight, okay?
He plays to the camera. I'm John Flynn. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I have Mr. Vincent Villamano, and Tom Cochrane, representing Ty and Bond, who are the town engineers in many projects. I don't know how much Denise has shared with you, but we're looking to the possibility of expanding water and sewer into part of Hampton, both as a benefit to some of the residents and as a potential business growth for what we call the western part of our community. I know that there have been preliminary conversations between some private concerns and the DPW board, but it's probably better that this goes pretty much town to town, or Selectment to Council type thing, and then we would take it further and go back to Springfield and see how they feel about it. But you, so to speak, are the guardians of the pipe, so we're here to see you.
So let me just update you all, because the council knows... So let me just update you all because the council knows what I've talked to them about, and, and they know about the conversations with private concerns because it was not with just the board of Public Works, but also with me. Once, once I became a part of the government, the responsibility turned over to the town manager, and I've communicated with the council all the way through what we were doing with the private concern, and one of the councilmen's concerns was dealing with a private entity, and they preferred working with a town entity, and so did Springfield Water. So it's, a lot of that is not a surprise to them, and the plan is, is probably, you know, the details of where it was going to go, is not something that I shared. It was a pretty high level, just so you're on the same playing field as they are.
Okay. We're looking for your thoughts as to where you want us to go with this. We are appointing a committee to handle the details, look at the exploration, work with Tyan Bond, explore the financing, that type of thing. How should that be communicated with you? How do we enter into however it is, starting a contract with you? Where do you want us to go? Who do you want us to deal with?
I think you put the cart before the horse, way before the horse. I can't speak for the entire, Mr. President, Matt.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I can't speak for the entire council because as a council, we haven't had a full in, a debate or discussion on this matter. But my own personal feelings is I don't see any benefit to the town of East Long Meadow. I don't see any benefit with us moving forward on a project like that. Just this time last year, we were experiencing a situation, experiencing a situation in town where we had to call for a voluntary abatement on outside use of water because of the, the lack of our infrastructure to be able to keep up with the demand that was being experienced. Why we would want to put our residents in a situation where they could have to deal with that with more, somewhat more frequency, or God forbid, a mandated use of, restricted use of water so that we can supply another community and/or private entities or business growth in another community, I have no idea. So I understand, I think I understand what you're asking of us, but I see no benefit to the town of East Long Meadow other than I see issues coming up. I see infrastructure issues, I see demand and taxing on our system, on our pumps, on our, on our pipes, on our, on our, on our, our whole infrastructure. Why would we do this?
Those are great points, and I think that's part of what the exploration will show. Obviously, the question of supply is not per se you, it's the question, that's the question back to Springfield. Do they think they have the capacity to supply another community?
But it's not just their capacity, it's our ability to supply that capacity through our system.
I understand that, and that's what I said to you. That's something to explore as well, as well as understanding with Springfield. Can they supply another community, plus take in to Bondi's Island the, the outflow as well?
Could I clarify? Because I was at Bondi's Island, as a matter of fact, one of the highlights of vacation times, you know?
She likes ticks, she goes to Bondi's Island. I don't know what's going on here.
The Springfield Sewer and Water folks said that they would not want to extend nor increase the flows through East Long Meadow for a private entity, however they have the capacity for residential, for municipal. So I don't care if you cross it off the list or make it a possibility, but it, it shouldn't be crossed off because there is not the capacity. It would not be, we would never do anything to not ensure we have water if we can remedy the situations, if there are some, that you'll find out through your study. It really is a case of whether we want to be good neighbors or whatever the issue, the issues are there, that Springfield Sewer and Water said that they can increase what we, what we are provided with.
So Denise, to, you know, to Eric's point, one of the first things we asked Bob was, you know, our ability to deliver to our community. We can't help a neighbor out, it's not that we don't want to. So we have to address our infrastructure before we can consider anything beyond that. And I think we've, we've had all these, you know, kind of cursory conversations, but we've never discussed with the board what, what that's going to take for us as a community, you know, to, to bolster our infrastructure, or what would be required, and ultimately, who's going to fit, foot the bill for that.
And it would have to be a discussion with Hamden. We wouldn't, we wouldn't foot the bill for something that would be for Hamden's benefit. They'd have to include that in their planning for hooking into us. And there, there are already plans discussed, certainly not put in place with Tyan Bond about how to address some of that. So I, I just, I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just saying there are ways of addressing, whichever way you want to go, without an effect to East Long Meadow residents, because we would never do that.
Right, and there may be opportunities, it may already be currently in your DPW or Water Commission plans to do upgrades. This allows you to accelerate it. And going back to Eric's point, we need to look at our infrastructure, what can we do? Look, I'm one of your customers. I don't know if you know that.
Yes, I do.
Okay, I am a Hamden engineer, we've been there over 60 years. Obviously, I'm concerned about the capacity of East Long Meadow to take care of my business, and I want to do the right thing for that as well. If this provides an opportunity for you to take care of your citizens by maybe partnering with another town and accelerating the upgrades, it should be explored.
Who's going to be on your committee?
We have four people at this point, some names you know, Paul Gagler Ducci.
Yep.
Now that he's done with the Cathedral High School, he's got some free time. Jay O'Brien, you know Jay, obviously, for the financial part, and a couple of chaps used to be on the planning board, George Romano and Joe Cruzell, who have some pretty good experience in this. And a guy you might know, Mark Langone, maybe familiar with him?
Maybe. Daggly familiar?
It's okay if he comes back into town and talks to you.
Good water guy.
Yeah. So, and we're looking for a couple more people as well. But that's a pretty good nucleus right there. And obviously, working with Tyan Bond, who are pretty intimately familiar with pretty much every community in the valley, gives us a pretty good reputation there.
Could I just say one thing? You know, I work with Bob, and I assume you're talking about Bob Perrin?
Mm-hmm.
You know, he and I were on the board of directors at Tyan Bond for 15 years before he left. He and I had many conversations over the last year, what's the critical aspects in your system that's, so to speak, holding you back from providing ample water to everyone? And I think that's one of the things, it's Chestnut Street pumping station, I'm sure you've heard that before. And I think that's what you're referring to, that's one of the infrastructure pieces that might have to be looked at and upgraded, the pumps and maybe some, some of the piping. We did do a computer analysis of the water distribution system. We're talking a total of 90,000 gallons a day at build-out. My experience on these types of projects, if you're running a water line, sewer line down the street where you have residential customers, they're not anxious to tie on because they may have just rebuilt their septic system, they're not having issues. It may take them 20 years before they connect into the sewer. Similarly, on a well, if their well is doing fine, they may not want to connect on. But I'll tell you, what's really important to them is fire protection. That's so important to be able to have hydrants along, you know, along the street. And from what I remember, about 23,000 or so is private developer-type water demands, and the rest is restaurants, housing, senior citizens, that type of thing. So it's about an 80%, 75% municipal demand versus 25% industrial or private.
We're not looking for your permission tonight to do this, we're looking for a partnership. How can we start exploring this? To address Eric's concerns, Joe, your concerns, same thing.
Eric, what are your concerns about how it would help, would help East Long Meadow? Because I'm a little...
Well, I haven't heard how it will. So that's, that's one of the things I want to hear, is how will it?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, perhaps this is an opportunity, as Tom said, if there were planned upgrades to your system, can this accelerate that with us partnering? And perhaps, as Denise said, perhaps some of the costs is shared, and there's a benefit to you. But without going forward, we won't know the answers. How would you like us to proceed? Do you want to appoint a small committee? Do you want our people to interface with your people? Do you, would you like just the DPW level at this point, or just a conversation with Denise?
Yeah, I mean, I'd certainly find what needed, it's an operational issue.
And I would certainly partner with Public Works.
I personally don't care to see it proceed, but that's my own personal...
We're putting our boards back together. And, I mean, having a subcommittee to explore further opportunities and look at the whole picture together, that would be great. And while he has a...
You just struck one.
Would Allen Street be one of the first streets that you'd be looking to possibly try something?
At this point, at this point, all we're talking is going down Allen Street.
That's it.
You know, and hitting the center. You're pretty familiar with, obviously, the layout of Hamden itself. You know, we get the side streets off of Allen Street, and we have a possibility of really what we call the Western Business District of Hamden. We provide water and sewer there, we have a chance of some growth. I don't think Walmart's coming in, but we'll still get maybe a couple new businesses. Good chance that Paul will relocate his accounting firm over there.
Hey now, don't be stealing our businesses.
You're too young. I don't go to other towns like some attorneys I know. I'll take that out of your bag, Don.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I would caution that we don't want to look at this plan because this was vetted under different circumstances, and I, I don't think that would be appropriate. Secondly, certainly it's appropriate that I would be working with whoever you want, and, and I would have, you know, constant contact with Hamden. And third, we can, we can look into this as an opportunity that Hamden is our customer at that point, so there could be an opportunity there to address.
So just a point of clarification, you mentioned 90,000 gallons?
That would be the future build-out, that's the total water flow demand that we worked out with Bob Perrin?
I would, I would caution that...
For Hamden?
I would caution that that was a, a water flow that did not include potential development. When we went to Springfield Sewer and Water, if I recall correctly, Bob Perrin said that it did not address underdeveloped land or undeveloped land that could potentially, that's, that's zoned residential, that you need to count those as possible because if one sewer and water comes through, now you can get a developer that comes in and says, I'm going to put a subdivision in there, you didn't count for those. And I don't think, and that's one of the reasons I caution, we don't, we don't really want to talk about what we had before until you've studied what you would have now.
Well, just to, sorry to clarify my question, I'm just trying to ask, so if we did enter to an agreement, we have to buy additional capacity, so the agreement would have a maximum capacity on it?
Sure.
Per se? Is that correct?
Any increase would have to go back to you and then renegotiate, reopen it up, et cetera. I think to Denise's point, because I had 15 years on the planning board, most of that land along the travel lane, Allen Street, is fairly well-developed.
Okay.
We are not talking about, because this is critical when you talk about putting water and sewer in, there are no plans at this point to change the lot size, minimum lot size, which would typically go hand in hand, once you have water and sewer, you drop down from what we call our 40,000, 60,000 lot to something that doesn't need septic and well.
Yeah.
At this point, there's no plans for that, which would be the only way you could do any development in that corridor right there. So, but Joe's point is 100% right, let's lock it down to a number. Anything future, you've got to come back to us before you make it bigger.
I got a question. How is the private entity that we've been dealing with on this issue before tied to this conversation?
They're a customer.
A customer.
Are they the biggest customer?
Could be, I mean, you also look at the police station, they use a lot of water sewer there too, but we also have, we also have the school, which is at this point still open.
Not as much as a private entity.
We have the business district, and we're also talking about incorporating the senior housing, which may be familiar, right at the center there.
You point to me like a senior.
So what percent of that 90,000 gallons a day would go to that?
I am.
That entity?
20.
20,000 gallons a day?
20%.
23,000, about 20%.
20%.
For that, for that one entity and the entire...
Now, my understanding is that's strictly potable water, that has nothing to do with irrigation or anything like that.
They, I think we know who we're talking about, and they just permitted a big irrigation well, I think for the capacity of 650 gallons a minute. You know, had we known 40, 50 years ago, that should have been a municipal supply, but their, their irrigation needs completely taken care of now.
Right.
What's their plan? I mean, they may have plans for future development there as well.
Well, again, same thing, we put a cap on it, there's a cap on it at that point.
All right, forgive me if this is a Captain Obvious question, but Wilbraham, they're not, they wouldn't be a suitable partner?
No, we haven't contacted them.
No, I'm just saying, you're part of your due diligence.
A previous firm took a look at the length of line to build a connection over to Wilbraham, and it was much further than the two and a half miles that we're talking about here.
I mean, I...
Actually, your line comes right up to the property, right up to the corporate property line.
Right.
So we were just simply on Allen Street, add an eight-inch ducted line and water pipe right down Allen Street, and similarly, hook on the sewer line to connect either into the pump station, it's right there, or drive right into the force main right there.
And previous conversations have led us to believe that that pumping station, as opposed to, for instance, like at East Long Meadow Road, it has the capacity to handle, and certainly the size to handle any equipment there. But again, we go back to your point there, Eric, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. We want to know how we can establish a channel with you and start the conversation, because it has to be talked about. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but we don't want to leave something we didn't explore. We want to work with you, with you.
I, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I have concerns with town resources, whether they're, Denise has certainly got a plate full, to say the least, and we've yet to continue to stop filling it. So I hate to see her time spent on this when I really think there's a lot of other priorities. We are now in the midst of the DPW, existing DPW board has resigned, and we're in the process now of advertising and hiring a new DPW director. My guess is his or her plate's going to be quite full when they arrive. I just, I, I don't right now see a value to the East Long Meadow residents, and for us to spend any resources on this, not just dollars, but even the time with everything that's mounting up in town that we have to do for us to expend any resources on this, I, I just don't believe is, is to the best benefit of our residents and business owners, quite frankly. But, I mean, that's not going to stop you from exploring it and so on, and, and, I mean, at some point, who knows, you might have something that convinces the council otherwise, but that's my concerns.
I have to, I have to agree with Eric 100%. I mean, let's flashback, as you pointed out last year, the problem he was saying was our tower, that when the water was consumed, that the refresh rate was hitting lower marks.
Insufficient.
Insufficient, and he said if it continues, and it was, we have to do the voluntary, and if it gets any worse, we're going to have to do mandatory. So we did voluntary, and the business community and the people responded by not watering lawns and so forth, and then it came back. The big concern that I have is that, as much as, you know, you're representing Hamden, we're representing the people of East Long Meadow. Can you imagine if your business comes in and finds out that you need to cut back on your water, and you have this beautiful lush cart before the Black Horse filled up with wonderful, you know, wonderful lawns and things? So what we need to find is find strategies, why this works for our constituents. So I would suggest that the town of Hamden put together a committee and come up with ideas and a proposal to say, this is why this works for the town of East Long Meadow, and then we can entertain it. But to use resources of East Long Meadow as a fait accompli, that this is really going to happen, is, I think, is a bit premature. I think we need a hard, fast proposal to see what it's about, to find out how can we delineate that this is only going to be in the west quarter, that, that this is such a great thing, that your constituents are going to go, wait a minute, we want, we want to be part of this, I'm only one street away. And then all of a sudden, now we're, we're taking care of more and more of Hamden. So I think we need something, something more in writing and a more strict proposal, understanding that our interests are for the town of East Long Meadow and its businesses and residences, and find out what works for us too.
No, Don, it's a good point, and until we talk about it, we're not going to know what answers we have to provide to satisfy your questions because we don't know your questions here.
No, but what a proposal, the questions, one, the proposal will lead perhaps to more questions and so forth, saying, listen, we're going to pay you this, we're going to have our own DPW, or is our DPW, if there's a problem with the water line, is East Long Meadow trucks going to be going into Hamden? I don't know. Are you going to be...
We'll have our own.
See, that's...
When you say, when you say, what are we going to pay you, are we allowed to ask those questions?
Absolutely.
Well, then, therefore, you are, we are using your resource. So at what, where do you want to cap that, as kind of a question?
Just to let you know, we just said our water rates at our last meeting, we increased the sewer rate by, what, 15 cents per hundred. We did not increase our water rate because we didn't want it to be a direct hit on our people, because we're paying more for water from Springfield. So what our current water rates don't reflect our actual cost, we're going to have to be going into other, like free cash or something to offset that. So I just want to make sure you guys, you know, are aware of that. If you're looking at, this is what we're paying, if you want to do a bump up, it has to be something that's going to be, you know, that's going to benefit East Long Meadow, especially as we move and talk to Springfield.
These are valid points and they go bear, I understand exactly where you're coming from because we have the same thing in Hampden. Maybe not on your scale, but we have people with obviously full plates. I would say you have an incredibly talented town manager. Let her decide at what point she's overloaded and bring it back to you and say, look, I can't deal, I can't put any more time into it. I'll do a couple hours, get it where it is and then report back to you. At this point, I'm expending too much. The return isn't there. You know.
So, could I speak to Mr. Flynn for just one second?
Sure.
That was a dollar.
Thank you very much. But what are you thinking about timing? Because the impact on me or on the council may be minimal if it's another six, eight months of studying. And I can't imagine that you're going to be able to turn that around that quickly.
No, I think we're really utilizing, fortunately Tom has quite a bit into this and he's going to have a little more into it as well. We have an incredibly talented engineering firm that really will be carrying the coal on this project. No question.
Quickly, we've worked with Bob Perrin very carefully and we think, he thinks that the item that has to be upgraded is a chestless street water booster pumping station. That will cause your tanks to fill quickly, eliminate the need for having any restrictions on water usage. I don't know if that's in your capital improvements plan to replace the pumps, the variable frequency drives and some of the internal piping. That's what we had thought had to be done to eliminate that.
And the conversation with the private entity was that they would be pitching in for that, if I remember correctly?
Right. And that goes back to what we talked about before, that perhaps this allows us to assist with accelerating upgrades.
But what would the timing be? What are you thinking the timing would be, was my question?
We would hope that. We would, you know, this would be a project for next year.
Oh, so then it would impact us this coming year. That was my point, to just find out.
But again, that's all part of explanation. We're not putting a hard, fast, like you said, let's caution from saying, this is a timeframe we must meet. Until we ask the questions and answer your questions, we don't know what it is. We need to come to you and say, is this something, we can start the ball rolling. If we have to stop it after it's rolling, we stop it. But until we start it, we don't know where we are.
Yeah, I think you guys have to put a list together and give us a list and say what we need to do to go ahead with this. Because you're asking us to do things that we're not sure about what we're going to do.
Well, what I was going to say before was, in a sense, you're asking us to make decisions without knowing a lot of facts. Now, this is just me, I don't know if the board would agree. What I'd like to see happen is, because everybody's been saying approximately this and possibly this and maybe this. You go to Springfield, find out if they have the capacity, what they're going to give you. So find out how that affects us. Go to our DPW. Well, go to, and I don't want approximately ninety, I want, so, and then go to our DPW and say, how is this going to affect us? What do we need? Put all these, you know, as far as increases in our system, put that together and then get it to us.
I would caution that they not be working directly with DPW.
I was just going to say, are we going to deal with it there?
The town manager.
I will, I will definitely have, I don't know capacities, but, so I would be working with companies. No, no, they would be coming with me. I partner with, with different departments, but, but they should be coming through me, not working directly with departments.
So that's it, I guess, right?
So you're open to the, you're open to the idea of a communication start? That's what, boy, we can't go anywhere.
Yes.
You can't go anywhere without information.
The reality is, by the time this gets back to the council, I'll probably be a Hampden resident, so.
You're coming from a different side then.
Yeah, it's never going to come near me, yeah.
Should we let him in?
What's, what's your tax rate?
More than yours.
Is it real?
Oh, yeah. We're nineteen.
Yeah, we're twenty-one, something just under twenty.
Twenty seventy-seven. Yeah, you wait till you get the water bill.
I know what the commercial rate is, thank you.
I played golf, if you remember.
Yes, I know.
So that's where we are. Quickly, and to one other point, I don't think it's Hampden per se that's holding up the pilot. It's the, it's the Long Meadow Board.
Oh, it's Long Meadow, well.
They suggested the changes. We signed it.
I, I was told it was the town attorney that's.
For both, but he worked for, they said this is what we want to change.
Okay. Thanks for clarifications.
What a surprise.
Shocking.
Shocking, I know.
Shocking.
Is this broadcast to Long Meadow too?
Yes.
So they got blacked out.
Any questions, if you have them in writing next to you, say while we're walking, that'll be great.
Again, you can pass those, you can pass those through me and we'll.
During the parade, we'll work on them.
You go in the parade?
Are you having it this year?
Oh, yeah.
Was it last year the rain out?
According to the home. At least two years ago, five degrees.
Yes.
They actually invited you guys?
Oh, boy. With that, we'll.
You don't invite, you don't invite your town officials?
They don't have parades.
I'm talking about the artists.
They have Memorial Day Parade.
You guys marching in?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it as long as ours?
Sure.
Ours is fifty aisles of.
Sometimes it rains, it's untethered.
The end is the beginning.
Thank you all.
Take care.
John, I'm available whenever.
Always a pleasure.
Let me know so we can figure out how.
I'll walk down from my office.
All right. If you want to move on to financial matters since Sarah's here.
Sure.
I'm going to entertain a motion to move financial matters, which is D up. If you're serious, actually here to discuss those.
Sure.
Sarah is here.
That's fine.
Item A under that, D one is the drone matter. And I can quickly go over that. You're welcome to stay, stay there. The, there's a quick memo that says the purchase of the drone was approved in next year's budget. There's been a bit of a glitch in, in the purchase of it in that the technology has changed and in order to fit the, what is it called? Infrared. Infrared. To, to the drone, they needed to change the model and it cost a little more. So in working with Sarah, she felt it was inappropriate for us to be able to buy accessories in this year's budget, which Ryan had the money for and not have the drone yet. So you can't buy accessories for something you don't already have. So Ryan does have the money to purchase the drone in this year's budget and the accessories would be what is used in next year's budget. But I, I wanted to clarify that that's what would be done with, and it's within my parameters to transfer funds from one place to another in the budget. So I, I did do some more research with Ryan, with the police chief, with the fire chief as to the uses of the drone, the policy that they have in place and other towns that have a drone. And I don't think, he gave me what other towns, but there, there were, there were significant number of towns. You saw them?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the list of drone uses is here, accident scenes, crime scenes, barricaded suspects, search warrants, going down to assisting the fire department, school evacuations, bomb inspections. There's a huge list of reasons why it's practical to get it. I personally, when it was proposed to me, thought, we are not spending money on a drone. But the council had approved it in next year's budget and to do it the practical way and get all the pieces that we need to make it applicable to all the uses as soon as we could and, and without increasing the bottom line of our budget, that's kind of where we are. So it really kind of is an update rather than a request for transferring money because that's within my parameters.
How much was the original appropriation of the drone?
I don't recall. Do you remember? Six thousand?
Says six.
It was six, yeah.
That's in the back of my head, but I'm not sure. I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on that.
That's what I'm remembering, but I don't recall either.
Can I add that the thermal imaging or infrared portion of this is an essential tool for all our first responders? With the fire department, they'll be able to look through smoke to find people in a building. They'll be able to figure out where the source of heat is from the police department aspect. If you had somebody with Alzheimer's, they wander off into the woods. It's at nighttime. So it's really, it's really a first responder tool and it's, it's a great asset. And to give up that portion of the capability of a drone would be, would be a real deficiency, so.
So I appreciate the update. I mean, it sounds like a smart thing to do at this point. But just a quick question, just out of curiosity. So where would it reside? Who's trained on it? Because it seems like multi-departmental use.
It is multi-departmental and I don't know that they addressed in here where it would be housed. The.
I believe the only one, the only people that have the capability to fly it are in the police department. I believe there's one individual who already is.
There's one in IT as well.
It does require.
There's, right, there's one in IT, I think. There's one in police and I think there's either one that's going to be in fire or is in fire. Because I just thought there was a second.
Downey cabinet?
That's getting training. That was getting trained, yeah.
And the training's allocated, cost of training is already, okay. Now, yeah, okay. Sounds like a good idea.
So the, the policies that are in, in play, they're, they're not completed, but they've got, they're, they've passed by the police chief and they're waiting for the fire chief to approve them. So they're, you know, they're well on the way to getting this all set and you don't get a drone overnight. So they're excited to be getting it, I'm sure. But that's where some of our money is heading. So, so on to Sarah, on to the national law pieces for, these are municipal modernization act bills, right?
Some of them are, but some of them are not. So this more is to notify you that these are the items that we need to update in our ordinances and to say that, that these are going to be coming forward to you in the final language. You will receive them at your next meeting as to the final language and therefore then you can accept them and then have the public hearing and then take the vote after that. So the items are MGL chapter forty-one, section thirty-one A. So it allows the town collector to collect on everything owed to the town, not just on the items that have been committed to the collector. Then, so that will just clean up some of our language to make sure that then we're meeting the letter of the law.
Help me understand the difference in what you just said.
Okay. So for instance, real estate, that's something that is committed to the collector and the collector then is able to collect on, okay? But something like we have health insurance for our retirees that we then bill them because they have a portion that they have to pay. That is something that is not committed to the collector. So technically the collector can't collect on that.
Oh.
But we want to streamline those kinds of processes within the town. We don't want every department who might have to send a bill out for something, you know, like a police detail. We don't want every department to be collecting on it. We want to funnel it all, to have one office designated as, okay, this is who's collecting everything. This is who, you know, if we need to go to collections, like a collection agency, we would do that or who would be handling all the money. So that's the whole point in it.
Got it.
The next item would be the revolving accounts. We've talked about it before. You have a draft here, some language. I am working with Jim Donahue over the next week or two to provide the final language for the ordinances. So the revolving accounts, they need to be incorporated into the bylaws. In previous years, it was something that you would just authorize at town meeting every year. Now they need to be incorporated. Another one is the enterprise fund. So we formally adopted LCAT to become an enterprise fund, but we never did the bylaw language for it. So that needs to be done as well. None of these were a part of what the bylaw subcommittee wound up proposing.
Will the, will the revolving funds have the dollar amount in the bylaw?
No.
Okay, so we don't have to change the bylaw to change the amount?
Correct.
Okay.
So the legislature decided that that would be a bit crazy to have to do. So it's the establishing it, who's the authority over it and what its purpose is, is your bylaw. And then every year you still have to appropriate the, they can be authorized to spend.
Good, thank you.
Yep. The next item is Mass General Law, chapter thirty-two B, section twenty A. So we already adopted that, excuse me, section twenty, not A. So we've already adopted that. That was establishing the OPEB trust. But it doesn't actually meet the GASB and the IRS definition of what a trust is. No one in the state met that. So the state came together and said, you know what? We need to make that change and make sure that then it's in compliance with everything else as to what a true trust is. So, but when they made that change, they required re-acceptance by communities. So that's why we will need to do that. And then the last one was Mass General Law, chapter forty, section fifty-seven. We have already adopted the statute, if I'm saying it correctly. But the bylaw was never actually written. So I believe you have seen a draft in the past, but the final one will be included, so we'll do them all at once. Originally, we were waiting for the bylaw subcommittee to present because I wasn't sure what items they were going to have. So these ones were not included on that and so they need to be on there. So this is just more of an update on that. Our free cash finished at two point four million. And so it looks like that we will be therefore rolling that over into next year when I do the free cash certification for next year. So.
Quick, quick question, sir. Is that an appropriate amount to carry over from year to year? Should we move some of that?
I would have liked to have moved some of it, but I didn't think of it until too late, so it wasn't on the agenda. So now I can't do it. But you will be able to do that next year as part of next year's free cash. So generally, generally you have whatever you didn't spend for free cash in one year into the next year is considered into the calculation. And then we also consider, okay, what accounts are in deficits? How did we finish out? Were there turnbacks? Were there not? Were there, those kinds of things? All of that rolls up into the calculation and therefore that then, that's how you get to your free cash. You include the free cash with your stabilization to say, how much do you have in reserves or i.e. savings account for a rainy day? This gives us a very, very healthy number in percentage and so meets where the goals were that we wanted. I would have wanted to use a little bit more of it this year to put into that OPEB trust. You know how I'm always voting for that?
Well, we had that discussion earlier in the year.
We did, we would. But like I said, I didn't think to specifically list that on the agenda, so I can't.
Does, does a matter of such, to the town attorney, does a matter of such, is it required to be specifically listed? If we wanted to transfer money from free cash tonight into the OPEB liability account?
It needs to be on your agenda.
Okay.
I agree. So I'm kicking myself butt.
So then when would the earliest time be that we could entertain?
Probably October. Yeah. So what I try to do is I have our auditors come out early to do the audit and I like to have them be at least ninety percent done before I submit my packet to the state for free cash, just in case there's anything that I missed. And so that will be, you know, September timeframe, beginning of October. So once we have that, then I will come back and, and ask, you know, depending how those numbers are certified. And then whatever else might show up, such as, you know, school buildings or things like that that we might have. Any questions at this time? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Denise, you want to leave a disagreement for regional dispatch, which is.
Oh, sure. It's such a fun topic.
Well, it's actually not bad news.
No, it's not bad news. I, I will tell the council that regarding the regional dispatch, I, it has been one of the more difficult decisions that I've had to make a recommendation on to you all because I wanted to be sure the community was protected in getting dispatching services that were appropriate and not obligating the town financially to something that might head down the wrong path and obligate us to a big expense to get out of. And if, you've all received the copy of the agreement. It has gone through reiteration after reiteration on how it should address the needs of all four, of four communities at this point. It is Hampden, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow and Chickapi. Chickapi is the biggest driver of this particular regional dispatch and I have been, I've only, I haven't been in office a year and I've met, I think it's ten communities so far that have been considered in or out of the dispatching, the regional dispatching whole proposal. This regional dispatch does address the needs of all the communities and different pieces of what they need. In our case, it's the civilian dispatch. It takes our officers and puts them into, on the street and doing policing while giving the dispatching over to a regional. It takes our officers and puts them into, on the street and doing policing while giving the dispatching over to a regional group. It is a process that will take a couple of years to do. My biggest concern with the whole thing at this point is that we, as part of the regional group, have applied for a grant for $9 million. Once we start spending any grant money, we are committed to that regional dispatch and have a two-year obligation before we can get out of it and expenses that we, that are incurred by the dispatch, the regional group, we have a portion of that. It's 16.3% for the town of East Long Meadow. It is a combination of call volume and we have $100,000 buy-in to start with. So it's a, it's a good formula, the way it's been finally worked out. It has been through, and Paul was part of the original financing committee. He's, I'm sure you've seen reiteration after reiteration of just that piece alone.
With that group.
Yeah. So I think it's a good concept. What has happened in the last two weeks, and this is a week-by-week drama, where in, in the last couple of weeks, we've applied for the grant, maybe about a month ago now. In the last couple of weeks, they have asked, the grant folks have asked us to start prioritizing what it is that we most need because $9 million is a big chunk of money for this grant organization. It's the emergency.
And would that be the whole ticket?
Uh, well, it's, it would give the infrastructure pieces all 100% financed for like the radios and all, the dispatch units and all of that. And 75% for the startup costs for personnel and all of that. So certainly, it's a big piece, but we're not going to get it all. So a question that Attorney Donahue had that was, brought about significant conversation across the board with all four communities, I being the strongest proponent of how are we going to fix that, was let's say we get $4 million or four and a, they say, we'll give you half. We have four and a half million this year and they say, trust us, we're going to give you another four and a half. The state's saying, trust us, we're going to get four and a half next year. Now we start spending the money, that four and a half, we're bought into that and it's a two-year process to get out of it. So do we want to commit to something that we don't know how much of the grant we're going to get? We might get 2 million. Who knows what we're really going to get at the end of the day?
And when would the grant notify the?
It might be as soon as, what I've heard this week, like I said, it has been week to week. This week, I've heard. It is kind of day to day. Has been possibly as soon as mid-July? I find that a really optimistic timeline. I would think it's more like mid-August for a state grant, granting agency to do it, but we'll see. I've had significant meetings with other communities and three of the four of us being the last holdout, well, not really holdout because timing is our, our town meeting was, I mean, our town council meeting was the last. Hampton approved it last week, Long Meadow the week before, Chickapi was on board the same week as Long Meadow. So everybody has that hesitation of what do we do if it's not fully funded? And us being last, we're seeing that it's more evident that it won't be fully funded. But we have really gotten assurances from the other communities that although we're willing to do this, regional dispatch, and we're willing to take the chance that it will be fully funded, if it is not funded appropriately, we will withdraw. So the grant process cannot continue unless all four communities are on board. And I am confident enough at this point, after really major headaches for the last week and a half as to whether we should do this or not, I'm comfortable recommending to the council that we should go forward with the district agreement, knowing that it will, we have a deal with other communities that we will meet immediately upon knowing what the, the amount of the grant is and withdraw if it is not an appropriate amount.
Denise, obviously, I was involved in the original incarnation of this and.
God bless you.
Yeah, involved in it, because we had more communities, different communities anyways. One of the things that was, that was talked about then was the fact that when Chickapi was getting, was theoretically getting their call center, it was going to be subsidized by the state police.
And that's no longer.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, is if state police had any involvement in it still?
Not any longer.
And the only other comment is, you know, the state is pushing for this, you know, it's pushing for regionalization. And you would, you would think, and I know this isn't like my Mr. Naive comment, that you would think that they'd be more willing to give out grant money since they're the ones who are pushing to have these regional facilities. I know we took a ride out to the one at Fort Devens.
Oh, oh, really?
The Shobba Valley.
Yeah, the Shobba Valley, yeah, last year.
Very well-run dispatch.
But their, their sheriff got them.
Oh, yeah.
Significant funds, significant funds for that product, you know, through that whole process through grants and whatnot, so.
Well, we've been assured by Chickapi that they, they have a strong, strong connection with the granting folks and that they've been encouraged to do this because they've been told that it will, it will go forward.
Denise, you mentioned, or the study, the agreement mentions were, I think, 16 or 16.5%. What dollar figure does that represent? Based on the actuary.
I think it was 185, 185,000 a year.
Okay. So we're only looking once up and operating. I forgot, what did we appropriate this year for dispatch? It was some, it was 100,000. It was 80-something thousand.
Four and a half people. Yeah, it was more than that.
Yeah.
It was way more than 100.
It won't save us a lot of money.
No, no, I'm not, that's.
But in the long term, it will.
I thought it was neutral.
No, I wasn't saying it was going to, that wasn't my point.
It's pretty much cost neutral.
No, I, in fact, I think that you're going to increase significantly, it's the world I come from. You're going to significantly increase the services in the abilities of the first responders by doing this. But the point I was going to try to make was that we're not spending a tremendous amount of more money to do it.
Correct.
It's not really 100,000, because we're, you know, let's say 100,000 dispatches.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's only 85.
Yeah, that was my point.
Netting out at 85,000.
It's a minimal expense for a, for, from a public safety point of view, a tremendous asset.
Even if we backed away, we can still, within, I mean, six to eight weeks, probably have our civilian dispatch up and running anyway. I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with regionalization. And if we back out of this regionalization program, it doesn't mean we can't join forces with Hampton and/or Long Meadow and Munson.
No, I think the point is we, if we back out after it's up and starting, if we back out, it's not for two years. We're in it for two years.
That's what we're worried about and I'm sure you guys would have the same concern. If you don't know how much of that grant money is going to be allocated to us. And we can lose money by bailing out, then, then, you know, that's a roll of the dice.
The only way to lose money, though, is if we spend their money.
That's right.
If we get the award and don't spend their money.
We will know before.
We get back out with an agreement from the other community. So we're really not putting too much on the table here to say, yeah, we're in. If the grant comes out and it's $2 million, we say, well, sorry, we're out.
And there's a letter.
We haven't spent a penny. See you later. If we say, yeah, we're in with the $2 million, we start spending their money, we're stuck for two years.
Well, I think it's also worth noting to Paul's point that the state's the one pushing this.
Right.
We're not the first, you know, we're not the first one out there. I mean, the.
We're not reinventing the wheel.
That's right. The, the, the other regional dispatches, of which there's several now throughout the Commonwealth, were all built off the same pot of grant money. And, and, I mean, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that every time the Commonwealth or Mass promises you something, they follow through on it. But I can tell you that historically, on what we're seeing, they have followed through on it.
Yeah. And they do want to.
Their history indicates that they will follow through on it.
They want to reduce the number of dispatcher, PSAPs that are out there.
Right, because they're saving money doing it.
They are. And we save money in training our entire police force to dispatch because it could be any one of them that ends up on the rotation. And, and more consistent, more specialized service from our dispatchers when that's all they do, rather than have an officer that hasn't been on for six weeks and now he's dispatching again and, and, you know, all of that. So it, at the end of the day, would be a better service for the community, for safety, for the officers and put our police where the police should be and pay for dispatching.
Oh, I'm convinced that by having this, whether it's in-house or disp, or regional, we're going to save that money tenfold in police overtime costs because now we're staffing up.
I don't know about tenfold, but.
Okay.
But we should save some overtime money.
Now you sound like the state. So I'm clear on this. This is strictly 911. So if somebody called 525, police number, it wouldn't be picked up there.
Just emergency calls.
Just 911. Cell phones would go still to the state police and then they would reroute it over there? Or are they working on technologies on cell phones?
Well, they're working on technology for cell phones, right, Mike?
They're working on it, but it's not fully implemented.
Right.
But it's close, right?
They're getting there.
That's why they always say, call, you know, call from a landline versus a cell phone.
Oh, I know.
So they don't, it doesn't have to do that.
Yeah.
So is there a specific language or that you're looking for?
I don't think so. I think it's just approval of the.
So then I'd move that we approve the regional 911 Emergency Communications District Plan for the Western Massachusetts Emergency Communications District and authorize the town manager to enter into such agreement.
Second. Oh, you moved that, sorry.
Only one other comment. I read through this word for word. Great reading. But it's, you must have really, you and everyone else involved must have really worked hard. It's a phenomenal document and I think it's very well put together, so.
I can't take credit for that.
Congratulations. Nice job done.
I beat them up on pieces of it, but I can't take a lot of credit. It has been six years in the making, I think.
It has. And I know a lot of it came from boilerplate, but it's not all boilerplate and I get it.
Yeah, for sure.
Very nice job.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that on. So there's a motion?
Hi.
Seconded? Okay, so. Thank you very much.
Denise, just out of curiosity, is the Correll group still involved?
They certainly are.
Oh, now you tell us after the vote.
So we will go to number four. Nomination and confirmation of officers for the town.
Where's a year gone?
I'm five. It's a year already.
I'll nominate myself for both positions? Is that possible?
See, you do it.
If you do it, you got it.
You can have it.
Yeah. But I would, in all seriousness, I would nominate Kevin for president?
I will accept it.
I'd nominate Don Anderson.
Thank you.
So.
Anyone else?
President? Anybody else for president?
I'll second my own, that's for sure.
You have to second?
I don't know. I just, I followed your lead.
Oh, accept, accept.
Accept.
All right. So we will start. Mike?
Kevin.
Kathy?
Kevin.
Joe?
What would it be for Kevin?
I'm going to vote for myself.
Done.
Eric?
Done.
Todd?
As well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, nomination for vice president.
Anybody interested?
I'm going to nominate Mike. Kane.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have my ear. Don?
I'll second his nomination then.
I didn't hear that.
He's seconding your nomination.
If you have to yell at him, we're not going to give you the job, okay?
All right, Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Hmm, yes.
I guess I will.
Sure.
Sure.
Eric?
Yes.
Todd?
Sure.
Now we will go to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the GMRC Incorporated with the, to return away to the chair. I'll be sessioning with you. You're second?
Second.
Move to second for the discussion. All in favor?
I have the role, yeah, thank you.
Mike?
I have to vote.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
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 Eric?
Yes.
Yes.